I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now can we have roll call?
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. So first thing on our agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. Lee Gresko, you'll have five minutes at the podium.
Good evening, all. So I guess as a matter of keeping things on the record and keeping them moving, just go like that. Having been at your study, work study, whatever that's called, the other day, we did in fact, Eya Wolf and I learned lots about how this process works, and that was good to know. And having that information now, we want to know the best places that we can go as citizens to encourage the planning commission or whomever makes these decisions about whatever goes into buildings. So we have interest in a grocery store, and I know you do too, and want that to happen, and you've done various things, and we'll still be doing things to make that happen. But we want to be as supportive as possible as citizens, and we will be here and be in your face as much as we can, just to keep the process moving in the direction for the citizens.
Ruth Allen, you'll have five minutes at the podium.
Thank you. So my comments are brief. So having more housing doesn't help the residents of Mount Lake Terrace. All this is doing is bringing more people into our area. And having, if it was affordable, maybe that would help everybody, but the townhouses are not affordable. Having a grocery store would be a positive addition for all of us in Mount Lake Terrace, people that have lived here, and the more and more people that are coming. Thank you.
Are they supposed to say their name and their address?
Probably, but I have it on. If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to speak, please use the hand Going once, going twice, that's the end of public comment.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar items A through E.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And then number four is the approval of the 2023 budget amendment ordinance for volunteers of America. Mayor Protem? Do we need to talk about?
Madam Mayor, one moment. Yeah.
We need to have someone excuse themselves. We need to have one excuse.
Happy to do so, Mayor, presuming there's no conversation. If you're moving straight to a vote.
Does he have to leave the room, or can he stay here?
Yeah, I think it's advisable just to step in the hall until the vote is taken, and I'll make sure that you're back out for the next item.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Yeah, I'm hoping that we're provided an update, since it was just mentioned there would be no conversation or no updates, and I'm assuming that there's going to be, we're going to talk about it a little bit.
We can. That would be, you need a motion in a second, and then call for discussion if you would like to have any.
Was a motion made?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the 2023 budget amendment ordinance for volunteers of America.
I would second it, but I'd like some background on it, if we could walk through it and try and understand why there was a change.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, and now we have a question, discussion.
Sure.
And who can answer that? What, our city manager?
I'd be happy to. So we separated out the volunteers of America items so that Councilmember Woodard would be able to recuse before, prior to the vote. The change, I believe, the last time that this came in front of council, the dollar amount was the same, if I'm not mistaken. At least I don't recall a change to that, but it's for capital programming for the volunteers of America Neighborhood Center. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions, if you have any.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
Put some background information, so everybody knows. So how did this come on our agenda to change the funding of it? How, what exactly they got in the first place? I know they returned money, and so how it was brought up, because it was brought up that they were going to use the money for a Lindwood project, and that project was paid for, and then we heard it wasn't paid for, and then we had somebody else come in and said it was paid for. So that was very confusing. And then, you know, we do have a council member that works for them, so we have to be very careful and cognizant of that. And so I was just wondering, you know, for the record, we could explain a little bit more about that.
Sure. So council allocated, I believe it was last year, I don't have the date in front of me, but $500,000 to help city of Mount Lake Terrace residents pay their utility bills during the pandemic. Not all of that money was spent, and we received back $482,354 of that $500,000 allocation, if I remember the number correctly. That went back into the ARPA fund to be allocated for different projects. There are, there is a desire, I believe, to fund mental health programs along with other programs that would help citizens of the community navigate through several of the challenges of the pandemic. After looking at what other governmental partners have put toward the capital for this project, $250,000 was the number that was decided upon to partner with the volunteers of America to build that neighborhood center.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. As long as we have the opportunity to discuss this one in particular, I think to our city managers' point, you know, lots of our colleagues in neighboring communities have invested in this project, and I think we recognize that there is a need in our community that is currently unmet, and this is the most readily available solution to do so. That said, I would challenge, I think, those of us up here, as well as those in our community, to think about as we look forward and look at funding social services as we move into the future. I think anytime we partner with a nonprofit, you know, they are providing those services oftentimes through the lens that they operate, and they do lots of really, really good work. And it is not the same as us, as a community, coming together and offering a community solution in quite the same way. And so I think that's a conversation that we need to be continuing to have as we look forward, is how we address these needs that we realize are very real and present in our community, whether it is behavioral health, whether it is housing, you know, a whole host of other things that we recognize there's societal need around, and really look at how we come together and offer those in as, in a way that I think reduces barriers as much as possible, and really does look at it holistically through how we offer those as a community versus kind of partnering out some of those services. So I'm excited that we have this opportunity to move forward with this project, and I think it is a good project, and they are doing lots of good work, and are much further along in the process than I think other solutions, and I don't think this is a be all, end all to lots of our conversation on Thursday. I think we have a lot of continued conversation to have around this topic, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Mayor, if I might, just a quick correction. The amount that was returned to us, I mentioned, was incorrect. It's what I get from trying to remember it off the top of my head. It was 382,354.
I wondered, because 488 would have been almost all of it.
I apologize.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and do we, who do we? We need to get him back in. We wanted to stay out there all. I'll wait till he's here before we move on.
Especially considering the city manager report.
Oh, that's true. I thought he was right behind the door. All right, so next is the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, several things to mention to you tonight. I really wanted to highlight the Movies in the Park event last week. That was a great event. 115 people, a little bit more, came to that event and had a great time, just because of our longer days. The movie started a little bit later. We'll try to figure out solutions for that, but in the summertime, we do get daylight pretty late, and I think most of us are thankful for that. We do have road closures on Friday that we will be communicating to accommodate the Tour de Terrace Parade, and we want to make sure that our community is aware of those road closures and come out and have fun at the parade. I think that'd be great. Also, the city booth will be part of the Tour de Terrace event, and we will be staffing that and being able to answer questions about several of the items that, or one of the items that you'll hear about later on tonight, which is the public participation plan for the comprehensive plan. We want to talk to people about that and get their input on what our community should look like over the next 20 years. One of the great things, I think many of you have met Harley the K-9 at the police department. We have Harley the K-9 stickers. We ordered a bunch of those, so if anybody is interested, I've got a couple for myself, but if anybody's interested, we'll try to hand several of those out at the booth over the weekend, too. Getting ready for National Night Out, that is coming up Tuesday, August 1st, and that's going to be a great event as well, so we're looking forward to welcoming our community out for that celebration here coming up in two and a half weeks. That'll be, that'll be fun. The Stormwater Annual Report is going to go out to the entire community as part of the City Happenings newsletter. That is a, it's a very interesting report, just talking about how stormwater's handled in the city, the things that we do, the projects that we're looking forward to, but communicating that with our residents and making sure they know what's coming up and how well we're doing. And finally, we talked, have talked a little bit about getting the police station back to where it ought to be with the flooring and the cubicle walls, so it's not just that big empty space in the middle. And I'm happy to say today, the truck was here, and they're getting started on that work today. So hopefully that should be done here fairly quickly. That's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Do we have any questions or comments? All right, thank you. The next movie in the park is a shorter film, and it's going to start earlier.
It should.
It sounds like.
Yeah, a little bit later in the year, so it'll be darker a little bit earlier.
I'm surprised that people stay to the very, very end for a very, very long film that started when it got dark, which was after nine o'clock. Okay. So next is a discussion on, discussion of public participation plan for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan update with Jonathan, our community economic development.
Good evening, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, members, Mayor Protem Wall, and members of the council. My name is Jonathan Morales. I am a senior planner in the Community Economic Development Department here at the city of Mount Lake Terrace. I'm excited to introduce Sierra Carson, who's representing the OTAC team, our consultant that we selected. Just want to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council for having me here tonight. My name is Sierra Carson. I'm a senior planner with OTAC, an architecture and engineering firm that is helping the city update its 2024 comprehensive plan update. Excited to be here tonight to talk about the public participation plan.
Okay. So this beautiful image, this is our brand for the comprehensive plan that we came up with alongside OTAC graphic designers. So as you can see, the three flowers that we see outside in the plaza, and then our naming of the comp plan Vision 2044. So the purpose of today's meeting is to go over our draft public participation plan, provide an overview of the community engagement process to date, and then have opportunity for questions and answers, including feedback from council, and then some brief next steps. So as far as the periodic update process, we are currently in phase one, which is our initiate phase. This includes the project kickoff. We kicked off the project on May 18. We also did a review of existing background documents, as well as developing the branding and project identity, as you saw with the project logo, and we also have various fonts and styles that we have put together for this process. And with this process, we also initiated our public engagement and visioning process. So this includes the draft public participation plan, as well as a community visioning survey, which went live on July 3rd. So comprehensive plans are mandated for each jurisdiction in Washington State that is either fully or partially planning under the Growth Management Act. Periodic updates are required every 10 years. Previously, it was every eight years. Mount Lake Terrace is a fully planning city and requires an update by December 31st, 2024. The last major update was in 2015, with subsequent amendments in 2017, 2018, and 2019. Comprehensive plans are informed by the Growth Management Act, the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050, and multi-county planning policies, in addition to Snohomish County countywide planning policies. So the Growth Management Act requires jurisdictions to establish a public participation program as part of the periodic update process. So this on the slide here is a section of the RCWs, which provides an overview of what's required for the public participation plan. Essentially, it's provide for broad dissemination of proposals, opportunity for written comments, public meetings, provision for open discussion, communication programs, informational services, and consideration of and response to public comments. So what is the public participation plan? So it's a detailed breakdown of community engagement strategies to implement throughout the duration of the project, and includes an overview of potential engagement, outreach, and communication methods and tools. Some of the key engagement strategies that we've identified in the plan include fostering an engagement process that is open, inviting, and transparent, ensuring that community engagement is equitable, inclusive, and low barrier, aligned with the Puget Sound Regional Council's Regional Growth Center Consistency Tool Guidance. So this is a tool designed to assist jurisdictions in developing, updating, or amending center plans, so for example, sub-area plans, and identifies key planning expectations for regional growth center plans. Another strategy is implement an adaptable framework for engaging community through in-person and online engagement opportunities. We acknowledge that having a hybrid approach to engagement is an important way of inviting folks to the table, ensuring participation. Finally, engaging the comprehensive plan advisory group. So as we've identified through our process of putting together the comp plan update, we want to have an advisor group that's made up of nine to 12 members, members of our community, professional networks. So we are currently starting to build that out and identifying potential members. We do want to invite some commission members, so having a representative from Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission, so one from that group, one member from the Arts Advisory Commission, and one member from the ARPAK, Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission. And then we'd also like to have a planning commission liaison and a city council liaison to staff this body. And that's just a few. Sorry, one more thing. We also would like to engage the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Commission as part of this process, so going before them at key intervals of the project to discuss the engagement process to date, gain some feedback on our equity analysis and other times that we would identify as needing their support and feedback. So who will be engaged through our comp plan update process? So the whole of Mount Lake Terrace, but specifically, we've called out some sectors that we want to do more targeted engagement, ensure that there's some strategies in place to reach groups that have not always been able to participate in the past. So these are just some examples, pretty broad, but we are planning to identify specific strategies to ensure that these groups can be reached. So they include existing neighborhood groups, renters and homeowners alike, people experiencing housing cost burden, our senior population, people of color impacted by historic lending practices, and displacement pressures. And this can also include small businesses that are impacted by displacement, people with disabilities and other special needs, our immigrant, refugee, migrant communities, employees, and people working in the community, our youth and families, people with lived experience with homelessness, and providers of social services. We've also identified interested parties, so these are representatives of existing networks that we've established through various planning processes throughout the years, as well as networks that you've established as the council. So they've been identified as important sectors to reach out to for input and to identify existing challenges related to housing development, economic development, community engagement, and transportation, just to name a few. For the most part, these are representatives by existing community and professional networks, as I stated before. Some groups represented here would also be invited to participate in the comprehensive plan advisory group. And these are not, this is not an exhaustive list. In terms of translation and interpretation, all materials that we develop will be translated into Spanish, and by request or upon need will be translated into the following languages: Vietnamese, Amharic, Russian, Korean, and other languages as needed. So the data that we used was from the Edmund School District, which identified these languages as being the top languages spoken in Mount Lake Terrace, and this is also supported by census data. And so we utilize a third-party vendor for translation and interpretation services, so we would use that for translation and interpretation needs, or another vendor that's suggested by our consultant, or one that we would identify later on. Now I'll pass it on to Sierra, who will go over in more detail some of the strategies for outreach and communication.
Thank you, Jonathan. So I'm going to walk us through some of the methods and tools for communication and engagement that have been outlined in the public participation plan. This, again, is not an exhaustive list. This is just where we started, so looking forward to hearing if there's any new innovated ideas out there. But the, these general communication strategies identified on this slide are really, you know, to be used, are really useful at the beginning stages of the public participation process and at various milestones as we go through over the next 18 months towards adoption. These are for building awareness about the project. We have a project webpage that I believe will be launched later this week that will include a description of the project, will identify ways for residents to get involved, and include links to the survey updated, will be updated with additional information, and have opportunities for residents to sign up for additional information. We have also begun using social media to get information out into the community about this visioning survey that we have launched, and we will continue to use these communication strategies, such as working with local businesses and advocacy groups to get out the word that we are doing this process towards, for their smaller communities that may not be in tune with these larger city processes. So these are all important strategies to be used throughout this process. Next slide. The direct engagement tools are really, can be used to supplement those overarching strategies. These can be used for a number of different purposes. For example, we want to use surveys perhaps to, for the visioning process, and, sorry, for the visioning process. We may use community liaisons or other community members to target some of those specific neighborhood bodies or community bodies that Jonathan had alluded to in an earlier slide. We want to ensure that we have presence at different events out in the community, such as Tour de Terrace and other community events, to find those people in the community who may not be coming to planning commission meetings or city council meetings to hear fun presentations like this. But we also want to ensure that we're showing up and having open houses and having those, being here at planning commission and city council for some of those bigger events, such as the environmental review that we will be doing as part of this process. And then we just wanted to give a little update on where we have been with our engagement process so far. As Jonathan said, that community visioning survey, which is building off of the council goals from 2020, or 2022?
2020.
The 2020 council goals, that was launched July 3rd. We've gotten 141 responses so far, and we will be continuing to gather responses throughout the summer and into the fall. And flyers have already been posted around city parks and city hall and the library, and we did have a presence at the July 8th Youth Science Fair to gather drawings from children about their vision for Mount Lake Terrace and to do some education about transportation. That's directed, Jonathan, here?
Yeah. Yeah, so before we get into next steps, want to open it to questions and discussion, feedback, anything on your mind?
All right, do we have any questions or comments? I guess not. Oh, go ahead, Payne.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jonathan and Sierra, for the presentation. I enjoyed seeing the booth at the science event. I guess my question, as you probably, or at least I know Jonathan's heard me. I guess my question, as you probably, or at least I know Jonathan's heard me speak to before, is sort of how we're sort of including people in the process, and I know you just kind of spoke to this to a degree, but I'm wondering, you know, we live in a, you know, suburban community with lots of, you know, our city boundaries are invisible lines, and we, a lot of people congregate or, you know, recreate or engage, sort of, you know, gather in Mountain Lake Terrace and beyond, and I'm wondering how best we, you know, especially with people who might, you know, speak certain languages at home or, you know, you know, have the opportunity to sit down and learn about this rather wonky process, you know, at church or at, you know, wherever they might be congregating. Are there ways to get, you know, to sort of amplify this message or to meet people kind of where they're at, you know, be it in Mountain Lake Terrace or nearby? I'm thinking of, you know, some of my, say, you know, Korean neighbors who go to church in Edmunds or, you know, things like that. I know we want to capture the experience of, you know, Mountain Lake Terrace residents, but, you know, also thinking about apartment dwellers and how difficult it can be to engage folks there. No, this is early days, but these are the things I'm thinking about as we sort of get into this process. And I know it's difficult to explain to my friends and family about what a comp plan update is, so, you know, hoping to have a robust effort, as I know you're already well underway with, but would love to hear about more, you know, maybe this is for a future update, more about how you're sort of meeting people where they're at, or sort of helping to communicate, you know, these sort of complexities to folks who might not even have the, you know, the smallest inkling of what this means, but will have really outsized impacts as we sort of grow into the future. So any thoughts or comments that might capture some of what I just rambled about would be appreciated. Thank you.
So as we are at the beginning of this process, and as you saw through the sort of strategies that we've outlined in the plan so far, we do have several different ideas for how to reach some of those parties that may be more difficult to reach through this process. I do know, I believe for the CPAG group, that there will be a number of liaisons from some faith-based organizations in the area that may allow us to communicate more fully with those, with those micro-communities within Mountain Lake Terrace and the surrounding areas. And, let's see. I do believe, let's see, I'm just going through my notes here. We do want to sort of work with the city's existing relationships with the interested parties and members of the community that the city already has relationships with, and build off of those to find, you know, perhaps those community liaisons within Mountain Lake Terrace who can help us reach some of those smaller, you know, bodies of residents. And I know I'm saying residents a lot, but we do recognize that there are more people in Mountain Lake Terrace than those who just live here, and we do want to recognize that those who visit here and those who want to be part of this community and maybe don't live here are also valuable in this process as well. Jonathan, do you have anything to add there?
Yeah, I'll add on to the community liaison approach. I think that'll be, it's an idea that currently we're still discussing the process, but I think it'll definitely help us get more targeted engagement, utilizing existing networks and members of the community who are established and who have their own networks, so building off those peer-to-peer networks to ensure that we can get our message across in a broad dissemination. So I think that's a strategy, one strategy that we can get more targeted engagement, especially with those who wouldn't usually participate. Another way is doing pop-up focus, pop-up events and also focus groups. So as we get more input in the survey and some more feedback, I'm identifying some common elements that we hear to see if there's a way to do more, do a, what is it called? A focus group, sorry, with members of the community with specific, yes, specific sectors of the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mayor, Mary?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for the great presentation. I am super excited about this piece of the work, and so I appreciate all of the work that's already gone into that and you coming to share with us. I am curious, and I don't know if this is something that's ever done, but I'm curious if we have ever incentivized or if other communities ever incentivized participation in these sort of feedbacks, whether it's like a one-for-one or some sort of like, you know, get the opportunity to win some sort of, you know, prize, you know, since people are giving of their time and their ideas to participate in the process, I'm just curious if that's something that's ever done and has been discussed.
I would say I'm not aware of whether it's been done before here in the city of Mountain Lake Terrace, but it is a conversation point that we've talked about as part of building out our community engagement process. So in terms of the Comprehensive Plan Advisor Group, there'll be a volunteer body, term limited, for about 18 months, more or less. And then as far as focus groups and participation amongst communities of color and other groups disadvantaged, we may discuss some opportunities to provide incentives to encourage participation. Anything else?
No, I think it's definitely worthy of discussion, and I'd be curious, yeah, even for like the online one, whether or not that would add value or add kind of, you know, the increase in spreading among, and maybe it would elicit not the feedback we want. So I won't say that it's a well-thought-out idea or that that's the right idea, but I guess I was just curious and appreciate that that is something you guys are talking about. I guess the only other thing I would say, I mean, so are you looking for suggestions from us? Is that part, like, are you looking for ideas to connect with the community, or do you feel like you have the, I mean, how can we be helpful in this process? You know, particularly, I will say, given just the timeframe, I think there's a lot of opportunities over the summer, you know, that probably are time-based, and so, you know, how can we be helpful to you in this process?
We're definitely looking for feedback and suggestions. I would say the way the Public Participation Plan is written right now is really focused in on that phase-one process, so the visioning. There's other phases of engagement that we are still discussing. So as we get more into topic areas, so housing, economic development, transportation, definitely identifying more specific engagement strategies and advice as well.
Okay. No, I think that's great, and I think that's probably one of the areas where it's easiest for folks who don't know what a comprehensive plan is to plug in, because I think whether you know what a comprehensive plan is or not, you know what you like about your community and what you'd like to see in your community, and that's really what we're asking for at this point. So I think ensuring folks understand that message and have the opportunity to raise their hand and share, I think, is really valuable and powerful. I think one of the things we heard about, and I'm sure Mayor Protem will share when we do our council liaison reports, but in the last PSRC Growth Management Policy Board meeting, they talked about some kind of unique strategies around tabling in particular, that they, some communities had spent time at their local food bank, for instance, connecting with folks there. You know, I think we've got lots of great stuff going on this summer. I mean, we have the Edmunds, one of the Edmunds School District's meal programs here in Mountain Lake Terrace, and that's one of those limited-time things that goes through, I think, August 24th. So if we wanted to connect with folks who are utilizing that program, that might be a good opportunity there, but I'm sure there's lots of other things, so I will give it some thought, but I appreciate all of the work and just all of the intentionality in going into this important piece of the process.
Great, appreciate it.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I just want to hear my voice. No, I'm kidding. I think you may have said this already, so I apologize, but nonetheless, if you haven't, I would encourage us, because this council and different times have talked about who are the nonprofits in our actual city. So kind of with that in mind, I don't know how far we've gotten with that. I know our former clerk used to kind of keep a tally of who was who. I don't know if that information's still around, but from going with that is, but the idea of incentivizing, working directly with those organizations, not to say you should be getting your people to speak about you, but helping to push this message of how important a comprehensive plan is, because this is how it affects us, which I think is a different message, just to think about different touchpoints for people, because I think even on this council, we're going to have to hear this multiple times, multiple angles from the same person with the moon in the right alignment to really let it settle, because it's such a big process. But getting those folks who can say, here's a tangible outcome of your participation, please respond, I would think would be in our interest. Now, again, I don't know if we actually ever got that list, but it was in our interest to try to find it, and I think it's the Mayor Protem's conversation about how do we find these people that undergirds all of that, so we'd be helping each other in the process.
Thank you for that. I would say on our community contact list, the appendix of the plan, we do identify some community-based organizations. So we have nonprofits and community-based organizations that are either based here in the city or work directly with community members. So as part of our next process is to look through this list and vet it further, and also identify other groups that may not be included on this list. So that's part of the process, yeah.
Councilmember Salmore?
And thank you for talking about the list. I just want to make sure that we haven't forgotten all our boards and commissions as well.
Yes, definitely.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. One idea, you were, in your presentation, mentioned there'd probably be postcards sent out to households regarding maybe what the comp plan is, and maybe will there be a community invite to come and discuss it some evening in those dates? And I know that those postcards will be going to most everybody in Mountain Lake Terrace, including those nonprofits or community member lists, but I'm wondering if we, I don't know how we'd do it, but give a personal invite to these nonprofits, including the churches, that they could include this information in their Sunday or Saturday sermons, so the people would know that they could come here at that date.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Not sermon, but announcements.
Yeah, we can discuss that further with the consultant, but I do think there will be a time where we would do an online open house or some hybrid open house, where it's more informational, so what is a comp plan, what are we doing, how, what are some ways to participate and get involved, so having that opportunity, so that way it's in-person and also online engagement. And we could possibly even record it, so that way it lives on our website, so folks can look back at it and learn about the process.
Great, thank you.
Did you want to go? Because I have.
You've heard me talk a lot about this. You're going to hear a lot more from me later.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that having them, asking them to come and help with, help us with our comp plan is going to draw probably zero people in reality, because they don't know what a comp plan is.
Right.
And then come to this meeting to hear about what a comp plan is, and we want your input, that's going to draw another zero people. So I was just sitting here going, what can we do to get them from A to B, at least to be interested enough to even look to the next step, to come to a meeting, an online meeting or whatever? And so I thought, okay, so we need a new message. So what if that message is something like, we want you to help us make Mountain Lake Terrace whatever, whatever? And then, when you come, then when they come to the next online meeting or whatever, then you start talking about a comp plan. This is what we do, because I'm thinking, you're going to get people of color and all these income, you know, diversity and so forth, and some people, especially refugees and immigrants and so forth, they have a completely different culture. They don't know what, they don't know what they don't know. And also, they are, they work a lot, and so they're not going to come to a meeting. So we have to kind of be a little bit different in trying to get them to come. Find out who the leader is in their community, because I think we have a Fijian community here, we have a Tibetan community here, we have, I hope we have a Ukrainian community There's somebody in, who's high up in every community, and if we can find them, then we can have them help us find, you know, get at least one or two people within their community to show up. Because let's talk about your regular person who lives in Mountain Lake Terrace, who is well-educated and at least reads our newsletter. They still have no clue what a comprehensive plan is, and they have no idea that they even want to be here to this meeting. So that's number one. I'm thinking, we got to get them to come. How can we get them to come? A lot of the people are not online. We think everybody's online, but they're not. If we want seniors to come, if we want immigrants to come, if we want, they're just, there are just so many, you know, diversity of people, and they're not, they don't understand. And so I'm just trying to figure out, how can we get them to that next phase? Because in reality, how many of us sitting here on the dais knew what a comp plan was before we became a planning commissioner or a city council person? So it's really, really difficult. Here, we're talking about it, we see all the reports coming in all the time, but the general public out there has absolutely no clue.
Right.
So that's just my two cents.
Yeah, no valid points. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
A follow-up to that, I think you bring up a lot of really good points, Mayor. I guess, and a question about accessibility, or accessibility. So we have the online questionnaire for folks for the visioning exercise. Is there a way they can fill out a physical copy of those questions if that is not something that they have access to?
Yes, we can make sure that we have printed copies of the survey. So, for example, we'll be tabling at Tour de Terrace, so I'll make sure to have a stack of surveys that we can have them do right there and then, and then collect that.
I think that would be great. Could we also have some maybe at the front desk here to where if folks needed to be pointed a direction, they could come into City Hall and request one of those?
Yes, I can look into that.
Awesome. Thank you.
And you got a pass, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I suppose I would be remiss, not to say anything at this point, as I have been ranting and raving about this very subject for years now. But this is our opportunity to shape our community for the years to come. This is our chance to create the vision that we've been talking about. This is our chance to be able to embrace all the values and ideas and things we've been dreaming about and put it into policy. And it's absolutely right, this is, you know, a comprehensive plan is a lot of technical speak, but this is our, the Public Participation Plan, and this is speak, but this is our, the public participation plan, and this is what's before us, and this is the reason this piece right here is so important, is because this is what takes that technical issue that is policy-oriented and turns it into a discussion for the community to have about how we're going to create the city that we want in 20 years. And this is our opportunity to be able to get involved as a city and community and reach out and work together with all the different groups, all the different families and creeds and ages and whatever. This is our opportunity to get everybody involved, hopefully, and work together to figure out how we're going to, what we want to be in 20 years and how we're going to get there. I'll leave it at that for now, because you're going to be hearing a lot more as we go through the next year and a half. But this is, I appreciate all the work that's gone into putting this together in the first place, and look forward to being involved in this process as an individual, as a council, as a community, and creating and dreaming and putting it all pieces together. Thank you.
House Member Salmore?
I guess I have a different approach to it, since I've been through several of these before. The community doesn't know what they don't know, right? And we're already talking about how much density we're going to put into the city. And so when you ask somebody for a survey that you want to grow your community or show what's going to go on the community, they have no control over that. And so there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle that people don't want to get involved in because we're already setting policy and guidance. And so when we tell them, what do you want in the city, and they say, no growth, we know that can't happen. And so I think a lot of times, it's looking at this comp plan, and a lot of times, the comp plan is for builders to build in different areas that they want to, right? And now I'm hearing a different spin on it. So if we want to take it in that direction, I think maybe being more specific, knowing and giving them direction on what is the growth that's coming to the city in the next 20 years? Hey, did you know that you're going to have this happen in your neighborhoods? We already have council people that want to put this in your neighborhood or that in your neighborhood. We want to remove parking downtown. Do you know some of these items? Because a lot of times, they're putting these issues out there and they're thinking that people are listening, when the ideas out there are already different than what they know of. And so painting that clear picture of what we're doing with a comp plan is very important. Be specific with your downtown. You want a grocery store in your downtown? How many people want a grocery store in the downtown? We've done research on why we haven't had a grocery store in the downtown, and it's because they don't believe that enough people will use that grocery store. We've done this several times, and now with the growth coming here, maybe eventually we'll get a downtown. Do you like how your downtown is developing? We've talked about it before, it could be very hodgepodge, and now we're getting tons of apartments. Did people want that in a comp plan years ago? No, they did not. And so there's different things to look at, and there's a lot of probabilities that we can't control. And now we're saying, okay, everybody, give us these wonderful ideas, but we can't do that one because growth is going to occur. We can't do this because right now, we don't have all the condos right here. We can't stop this because we're going to have low-income housing. We can't do this. So I think it's a really good framework and how we're discussing it here tonight, but it's really looking at what is feasible for our city. And when you're voting for something, do you have the facts and data behind on what you're voting for? So it's nice to have a survey, it's nice to get all these ideas, but it's also important to educate our community. And if we're going to look at a comp plan, there's things that we're limited to and not, if we want information about the downtown, we should put out what we're looking for. But a lot of times, when people, I have girlfriends that fill out the surveys, and I'll see their responses, and I'm shaking my head, I'm like, oh, I forgot to tell you that piece of area is already designated for this type of housing. Well, I didn't know that. Well, what about here? I want this here. Well, sorry, you can't have that because this is going to be developed for 500 apartments down by light rail. You can't have a grocery store right there because it's on light rail. Oh, well, what about here on the freeway? Well, you can't really build like that, you know, on the freeway because it's all designated for something else. And so it's really hard to have a clear picture of what a comp plan is and what we've done in the past. And so I'm just putting out these ideas here because a lot of times, when we give direction, maybe we should put more parameters around it. However, I know with a comp plan, and you as a consultant, you see this all the time, and you know what we can and can't do. And so any comments you have, we do appreciate them. I think the council's comments were great tonight because we're enthusiastic about what we want for our community, but what we truly want is to hear from our citizens. And so with that, I'm just going to close, but I just wanted to put out the other spin on sometimes things that we don't see or hear or feel.
Are we allowed to have the public ask questions on this particular?
Not at this particular forum, but there are going to be ample opportunities to talk about this.
Okay, all right.
House Member Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the things, maybe that would be helpful, that we didn't walk through, so having taken the survey, I know what the questions are, but I know that not everybody probably has had a chance to do that, and I do think that they were very thoughtfully framed in trying to guide us to feedback that hopefully will be helpful as we are going through this process. Is that, no, that's not on the document right here, but is that something you could walk us through, high level, kind of what that questionnaire looks like? Is that, and if it's not, that's okay too, but I just thought it might be, kind of given the conversation, I do think that it might be helpful for both the council and the community to understand the sorts of things that you're looking for. We don't have to go through the whole thing, but maybe just kind of some key thoughts around it.
Yeah, and I'll pass it to Sierra, if you want to just...
Yeah, absolutely. So fortunately, I cannot share my screen tonight, but I can sort of walk us through sort of how the existing visioning survey out there is, has been structured. It does begin with a little overview of just sort of why we're doing this, you know, asking the community, what would you like to see as we grow? And why is that thing important to you? And asking people to take this short poll to tell us, you know, their big ideas about how the city will change over the next 20 years. We have sort of three short answer questions that start out the survey, that kind of give a positive spin on what we want or what we can, or what the community can provide in feedback. You know, we want to know what people love the most about Mountain Lake Terrace. We ask people what makes them proud of this community, and we ask, in 20 years, what would you like Mountain Lake Terrace to be known for? To sort of help people frame this as, you know, this is a long-term vision, you know, there's going to be growing pains that happens, but you know, we have a long-term vision here, we're looking 20 years out, we want to ensure that the things that you love now, we can identify, so we can work that into the plan as we move forward, as part of our growth and as part of our change. The next section of the plan speaks to the vision, which takes that vision statement from the council goals and sort of buttons it up into a little paragraph here. And we've asked people if this vision statement does not all describe their future, if it somewhat describes their future, or if it accurately describes the future of Mountain Lake Terrace. So that you have an option to choose which one, and you can add comments on your response as well. We've also asked people to give a rank order of some of those items that are identified in the vision statement, so dynamic and engaging and innovative and welcoming city, having diverse housing choices, having a network of parks, for example, giving the opportunity for people to give feedback in a limited way, but also allowing them to give open-ended responses about the things that they love about the city. We've also asked for some specific feedback about the different sub-areas. This will allow us, as we move forward into the sub-area analysis project for both Cascade, you and Melody Hill, to sort of start the ground running in terms of what we know the community might potentially want in those two sub-areas. So we've given folks a map of the city with all the sub-areas labeled. We've asked them to select which sub-area they have the best relation to or that they are most connected to, and we've provided some checkboxes for folks to describe all the things that they think contribute to the quality of the life in their neighborhood or sub-area. So this is, there's a lot of different options here. We have about 20 different options, but they're all things that I think, as we put together the survey, were items that could be affected in one way or another through the comp plan process. We've also provided another option for people to give additional feedback as well if they don't feel like what they want has been covered in our list of options. We've also asked folks to rank those same sort of 15 options from above on the things that, the top three things that they would like improved through this process, as a way to start prioritizing what the community might want to see over the next 20 years. And additionally, a last open-ended response to ask, you know, what is one thing that you want to make sure is added or improved within your sub-area? This just allows another short answer response for feedback that supplements some of our more restrictive checkbox questions. This is a way that we can balance qualitative and quantitative information through the visioning process. And then the last section of the plan is sort of, the survey is sort of our wrap-up here. We've asked residents and takers of the survey to indicate what sort of activities they would like to most participate in. So would they want to be part of a focus group? Would they want to take a future survey? Do they want to go to a virtual meeting or webinar? Do they want to go to an in-person meeting? So we've asked those questions. We've also asked residents to provide ideas or suggestions for local pop-up events or community gathering where we could interact with the community. We've also asked what the best way for the city is to communicate with you, electronic newspaper, newsletter, posting at City Hall. This was an online survey that was posted on social media, so our responses so far lean heavily towards people would like to take future surveys, and it's very easy to reach them on social media. So as we get this process out, we are hoping to get some more diversity in, you know, the people we're reaching through this process. And we've also provided a comment box at the end for people to provide an email address that they would like to receive more information throughout this process. So all in all, it's about four pages long, 12 questions, tried to keep it simple here. Questions, I guess.
What would you say is the average time to take the survey?
I think the average time is about eight minutes with like an 80% completion rate. So not every single person completes every question, so we're getting about, you know, 130 responses out of the 140 total people who have taken the survey.
House Member Salmore?
So I'll just go back to my original statement. So when we ask people about affordable housing, to me, that's different than what you might think is affordable housing. So we're not level-setting people when they're answering surveys, what is affordable housing? Is affordable housing smaller? Is it higher? We don't know. And then the new laws, it doesn't take into consideration the new laws that have been, and we talk about going into different districts, like Melody Hill, it's on our agenda to look at that. People don't know that. And so when we go out for surveys, it's hard because we're not educating the survey taker on what they're actually voting on. It's just nice to have, right? And so if they say in community, I don't want any additional housing in my community, what is the council supposed to do with that? You know, and so it's out there to educate. And so I wasn't going to get too far into this, but it's hard to do a survey, and I just went to the website, is the survey on our website? I've been on vacation, so I apologize, and I typed in "survey" and it just didn't pop up. And so is it very easy to find on our website? And I'm assuming it is on our website?
I believe it is on the website. I know there was a social media post published on July 7th with the survey, which got about 1,000 or so hits. We are building out that webpage to be published this week. Ideally, it'll be published on Thursday. And that'll include the link to the survey, in addition to other information on the timeline for the project, ways to get involved, and an overview of GMA and comprehensive plan.
So right now, if we tell anybody, go to our homepage and type in "survey," it won't be done for a little while?
I'd have to check on that, I'm not sure how...
And I'm not trying to belittle the process or anything like that at all. It's just very hard when you are a council member and you get survey results back and you see all these wonderful ideas, and then we don't have a way to follow up with those people on why we can and cannot do anything. So it's very interesting to maybe have our consultants show us what other cities have done, how do they educate their communities, what has been done in the past. I know what we've done in the past, but we haven't gone back and shown our council what we've done and the survey results that we've had. And I think what our council's trying to say is we're always trying to look at how to do something better. And it's hard, because when you get new council members in, right, they have to see it again, and then older council members, we forget what we see. And so it's nice to be reeducated on certain things, because a comp plan, like it was brought up here tonight, means one thing to one person and another thing to another person, and what we technically do with those is different. And what is else is hard, is you get a survey of, let's say, 200 people, and we base a lot of what we do off those 200 comments. And I think tonight, when people were asking, where are we going with those surveys? You know, Rick talked about the churches, Steve talked about the nonprofits, Erin was talking about all these other people that we've missed. I think that, at first, I was like, hmm, we've never really done that in the past. We've tried, but I think their comments are extremely relevant on looking at, we're trying to hear our citizens, but we also throwing in the mix on how do we educate them.
Yeah. And I would say the survey is, you know, it's a start, it's not the end-all, be-all. Right now, it's for the visioning process, so trying to confirm the existing vision. We are in the exploratory phase, where we're trying to define what the engagement process looks like. We want it to be intentional and equitable and make sure we, you know, reach all of the community. So that is part of our challenge and an opportunity as well to make sure this process goes right.
I'm not belittling anything you're saying. I like the stance you're taking because you repeated it back extremely well, and I think you heard us. So thank you very much for that.
All right, anyone else? Oh, your pro tem, is that your hand?
Of course I will. No, I think the important part is, this is a process. This is not, you know, we're not just doing a survey and getting results and going to try and put together a plan based on, I mean, this is, the whole idea of public participation and engagement is to create opportunities for our citizens to be involved and tell us what they like, don't like, what their vision is, where they want to go. And yeah, this is going to be, part of it's going to be just getting hopes and dreams and ideas, and part of it's going to be educating ourselves and them, and I mean, this is a year and a half process that we have to be able to work together as a community to put together our plans. And is it going to be exactly what I want? No. Is it going to be exactly what you want? No, it's going to be a combination, it's going to be working together to figure out how to get to where we want to be. And it is, I mean, as we've been talking about, as far as particularly housing, for instance, I mean, we are required to figure out how to accommodate 3,000 additional, beyond what we've already planned for, additional people in our community, which equates to about 1,500 additional units beyond what we've already planned for. So we've got to work together as a community to figure out how and where is that growth going to go. And then another part of that is, we have to, the affordability issue. Half of those, half of those 1,500 units need to be considered affordable, and then definition of affordable. And so part of it, for instance, 30, I think it was 25%, need to be affordable for the 0% to 30%, so that's obviously subsidized housing. Where and how are we going to make that work? How are we going to fit them into our community? Where? Where? And then there's the, you know, 30 to 60%, 60 to 80%, 80 to 120%. We have to figure that out. We have to figure out as a community, how are we going to get there? And, and it's going to be a process, and it is a challenge. And, and some of us aren't going to be happy with, with the end results. But ideally, if we're working together, we're going to come to, we're going to find the best compromises, the best direction, the best approach, the best way to do what we need to do to accommodate the growth. I mean, we couldn't, is, is, too many times have happened in the past, if we decide we don't want to grow, we're going to let it happen to us. It's better to embrace growth and figure out, how are we going to address this challenge? And where are we going to put the additional housing and the additional, and the type of housing? What kind of housing do we want? What kind of growth do we want? What kind of business? Where are we going to put the grocery store? Where are we going to, how are we going to, how are we going to attract? Part of the challenge is, you know, we all want the grocery store, but how are we going to attract that grocery store to our community? So that's part of the planning process we need to do. What it means, it's going to be part of the policies we need to adopt to incentivize the, the type of growth that we want here in our community and attracting the type of growth that we want in our community. So those are all part of the, you know, the pieces of this challenge that we need to come together with to figure out how we're going to get there and how we're going to be, what we're going to look like in 20 years and how we're going to get to there. Anyway, that's it for now. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands going up. I think you've heard quite of it tonight.
Yes, no, appreciate it.
Thank you for all your comments.
Thank you very much.
Lastly, just a quick next step. So we will be presenting before the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission on Wednesday, July 19. So that presentation will be partly educational on what is GMA and what is the comprehensive plan and why are we required to update the comp plan. And then secondly, going over our community engagement plan and ask some feedback as far as, what are some things that they would like to see or how would they like to participate in this effort? Some summer engagement opportunities. So we'll be tabling at the Tour of the Terrace on Saturday and Sunday, in addition to National Night Out on August 1st. Our visioning survey will be ongoing. We are currently discussing what the closeout date will be, and then we'll be doing some survey analysis to determine the results of that and next steps going forward. And then on August 3rd, we'll be back to council with our list of suggested comprehensive plan advisory group members that we will hope that the council can appoint on August 3rd.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I was debating on whether or not to say this, but you gave me an opportunity. So I very much appreciated the conversation. I particularly appreciated reminding us, this is about a year and a half process, plenty of time. That said, the one thing I didn't hear, and maybe it's just in my own ears, I automatically age things, but I didn't really hear, how are we going to make sure that we've got that age diversity in there? And I'm going to drop it all the way down to 18.
Yes.
I think it should go lower than that, but that's just because, you know, 20, 20 years is going to impact a 16-year-old differently than this 53-year-old. But that's a different discussion. It's also recognizing there's that 35 to 25 that's just super busy right now, raising families, raising themselves, raising parents. I mean, it's all in there. But that said, I wanted to say, it would be interesting to see if we can't make this actually interesting. And I'm saying this with a suit on. How many of you know what a TikTok is? Seriously. Now, we're laughing at it, but I'm telling you, that tool is a lot more effective at breaking down super complex ideas than anything that most of us have seen to date, and it's the young people who are pulling it off. There are some older folks who have also done some really cool things out there. Most of you have better already hooked on this one African-American woman who just tells you what a word means. Nothing more than that, not even in an interesting place, just telling you, here's what it means when you say X, Y, or Z. Just again, just this idea that you can break things down, and people are stuck on this dang tool, so much so that you have reels, for those of you who don't think you're doing TikToks. If you're on Facebook looking at reels, you're looking at TikToks. So just kind of reminding us that there are accessibility issues here that will go much further and equally in the bigger scheme of it all, perhaps help us get ready for the next, next version of this by educating the younger people who 15 years from now, when we do this again, go, wait, I remember something about a comprehensive plan, because that stuff gets stuck in your head, because everybody in here likes corn. On that note, if you didn't know what that meant, I'm sorry for you. End of comment.
All right. Are there any more before we move on? Okay, I don't see any other hands going up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is council liaison reports. And which way should I start? Start with councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. So if I did my math right, we skipped a month, or excuse me, a month, it felt like a month.
We have to go back.
A meeting. It started with an M, with a meeting, so I'm going to go further back. But surprisingly, I didn't do that much, so don't worry about it. You were at most of them with me. It all works out. On the 28th of June, I was at the ribbon cutting for Ballenger Park, which I just want to say was amazing, everything about it and then some, including the park that this is a research site. So in the spirit of give feedback over the long term, please don't just walk past that. Click on the QR code. Give us your feedback on how that park is operating. I've heard so far that the slide is hot. Okay, moving on, that was a little zinger. The 29th, three different opportunities happened, and I was able to participate in all of those. The South, excuse me, the Sound Transit Tour of our Light Rail Station, and I'm sure everybody is excited, so I will just leave it there for other people to talk. I quickly ran over, although photographs or everything, to see the community launch of the new resource, My Network News, and just want to wish them well. They do a wonderful job of covering us and covering things sometimes we don't want them to cover, but that's their job. I just want to wish them well. Thank you for that giggle out there. And then, of course, we were together for the study session. And then on the 3rd, had the opportunity to be with the 3rd of July. I just want to say thank you to everybody who continues to keep that going forward and just for, just quite frankly, a very special night, and I'm going to leave it at that. And then on the 6th, I actually took time off, but I still was thinking about all of us. I went down to San Luis Obispo where I, this happened, it happened, no, I think it was in the water. The mayor of San Luis Obispo and one of their other council members, so a five-person council member, happened to be very close friends of mine from school. And just wanted to get a chance to know, they're a city manager model as well. They're going through growth pains. They too are their own version of Not Over Here. So it'd be interesting to see if we can't learn from each other. They were very open to that conversation with their city manager, so if you're not already, connect you to him very soon here. And then on the 12th, to wrap this up, I had the wonderful opportunity to tour the Public Works Building, which turned into, oh, man, how much is that going to cost me? Oh, man, how much? And so thank you for that, because that was a wonderful way to introduce us to problems. And then we also had the opportunity to tour the 911, Snow 911 facility. And what an honor to learn, I already knew this, but to hear it again and to experience it, that we are a backup site for this county. If something were to go wrong and the Everett site were to go down, all but literally with the switch, a flip of a switch, all of that very critical, time-sensitive information has a plan to come back and route it here to Mount Lake Terrace, including the time it takes them to drive from Everett down here to Mount Lake Terrace. There's a plan in place for that, so just want to applaud them for that. But another example of, oh, man, how much is coming our way, noting that they too have a lease coming up and an interest in staying in place, so that's a conversation for us to have very soon here. And then on the 13th, I was at the study session, end of my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I too, on June 29th, attended the Sound Transit Tour, and I will fangirl, although I am surprised that councilmember Woodard held out, because he took some amazing pictures while we were up there. But it was really neat. We got to tour the Light Rail Station as well as kind of the area around the station down there and the work that they are doing, and it is just phenomenally exciting, the progress that they have made and what that means for, for all of us, I think, as we look forward. I will say, as I was, well, as I often do these days, as I'm sitting in traffic, which has gotten worse as somebody who commutes to downtown Seattle, I am very excited about being able to get on Light Rail here in Mount Lake Terrace and get all the way down to work in one swoop. So it was phenomenal. I'm excited. Can't wait to share it with our community here next year. Had our work session that evening. On the 3rd, attended our Independence Day celebration down at Lake Ballenger, which is, I will say, I think for me, it was probably, it felt like the coming together of our community for, I mean, very much in a way that had, for me at least, it hasn't felt since before the pandemic. And I thought that that was just a really amazing opportunity to see so many community members and friends and folks that, in many cases, I hadn't seen in several years. And you could just see folks like seeing each other and reconnecting and, and having an amazing time and just appreciate all of the staff work that, that goes into that event, all of the cool things that, that folks had to do while they were waiting for the fireworks. My, my 12-year-old participated in the pie-eating contest, which was quite, quite the, quite the thing to see. So her and her friends signed up, and they came back and they were talking about it. And then, then they found out that they didn't get to use utensils, which somehow they hadn't realized, apparently they'd never been to a pie-eating contest. So anyway, that was quite the surprise to them, and it was quite fun to watch them, them take on the pies. And so that was an amazing event, and again, thank you. Thank you for all of the work that goes into that. On the 6th, attended the PSRC Growth Management Policy Advisory Board as the alternate. I will let our mayor pro tem do the wonderful job he does in, in talking so passionately about that work. But again, I, oh, I was going to say, and I think, oh, there, I was going to say, I think that they continue to bring forward lots of really good tools and ideas and resources, and I'm sure that you are fairly well-apprised of that. And, you know, I, I just appreciate that they, they help us to, you know, bring those things forward, to help us more effectively go through that work. The 13th, I had my city manager meeting and our work session, and then I attended Movies in the Park. It was a long day, but I will tell you, I brought my nine-year-old and my 12-year-old, and while my nine-year-old fell asleep, in my lap, which actually was very sweet. I was going to say, I don't get a lot of that these days, and I'm trying to cherish those moments before he no longer wants to do that. But my 12-year-old hung on to the bitter end, so she was very into the movie, and, and it was just, it was a fun opportunity to, to gather in our, you know, one of our local parks and do something a little bit different and come together. So again, appreciative for all the efforts there and just, you know, appreciative that we continue to look for different opportunities to try new things, and I think this is a really great example of that. And then just a quick reminder, it came up, you know, during our last presentation, but our monthly DEI Commission meeting is at 7:00 at City Hall on Wednesday. So that completes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next will be councilmember Sandmore.
Thank you. Since we're going back a month, I just wanted to, well, I'll start with tonight. So we did have a financial meeting tonight, and thank you for staff for hosting that for us. And also the Lake Ballenger play equipment groundbreaking. It's nice to see that children are still having the chance to be children and playing on playground equipment. You don't see that as much as we used to, so it's very nice to have that opportunity for the children to be kids and go down to that, and it's really cute, equipment down there. Also, we had a LEF One meeting where we review medical claims, and I missed the last meeting on that, but I'm sure Councilman Ryan was there. And then we did have a park and rec meeting in June, and we will be having new board members. And then the Sound Transit Tour. I'm glad to report that we do have two restrooms down there, and you have to be let in by security to get into those restrooms. But there'll be two for, I think they said, about 5,000 people per day. And then also, I'm sorry I missed the fireworks, but I'm hoping next year we can look into drones. I did hear lots of complaints about fireworks, and we hear that every year about the fireworks, and I'm hoping that maybe drones would be a way of the future. And then I also am wanting to remind everybody about Tour de Terrace this weekend. I'm looking forward to that. And thank the Smith family, because it is not hosted by the city of Mount Lake Terrace. It is by a private organization. And then I also wanted to thank Councilman Rick Ryan, because I heard he's working that, and I'm hoping he gives us a report out on when to be where and at what location. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. So next will be councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor pro tem and council. Hi. Since we're on the parade, it will, the parade starts at 7:00 PM on Friday, and we meet anywhere from 6:30, 6:45 around where Cousins Hair Design is. All you have to do is look for seven Chevy Corvette convertibles, and you won't miss them. And it's been about the same area for about 12 years. So we will have signs for your car, and make sure you bring some water. Okay. Then on the liaison report, going back to June 28th, I also attended the Ballenger Park ribbon cutting for the, what I'd call the big toy. And then on, then on July 3rd, I attended the 3rd of July fireworks celebration. Then on July 11th, I attended the LEF One, which is Retirement Medical Retirement Board for Retired Police and Fire Department. And then on the 13th, when you were here at the work-study session, I was at the Emerald Downs Equine Artist Reception with two of our Mount Lake Terrace Arts Commissioners and one past Arts Commissioner. And we had one, we had one commissioner submit artwork and receive three awards for the evening. And not only is it a good time for us to go down there and see if we could win some awards, but it's also a good time to do some networking with the artists down there and remind them that we are having a Mount Lake Terrace art show, and don't forget to submit your art. And, for the art, submitting the art. You know, I, I can't remember what the deadline is. I don't have that right here.
15th of August.
15th. Okay, 15th of August. Thank you. Not here. Okay, great. And then, let's see, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, going back to the Hazel Millar Playground grand opening was, was the, where I guess we start off. That was, that was terrific. I've been running by there on a regular basis, and even at 7:00 AM in the morning, seeing kids out there with their parents, and it's clearly attracted a crowd and is, is, you know, meeting a need there. We've also heard about the Lindwood Link Tour. That was super exciting to see the station and, you know, getting that update on all the good stuff that's going to be happening in the, the coming, you know, months. I think we'll, we'll see a lot of the finish work happen at the, in the surface parking lot and the station itself, so pretty excited about that. I unfortunately got quite sick over the 4th of July meeting, or, you know, 4th of July holiday and missed the 3rd of July sadly, but really want to give kudos to, to staff. I was getting, while in my, you know, fever state, got lots of texts from, you know, neighbors having a great time and, you know, got some, you know, live feed of texts from the, the pie-eating contests and just generally people excited to be back together and really, I think, you know, goes to show the hard work of staff that's gone into that event. Also, unfortunately, missed a Also unfortunately missed a bicycle tour with, in our, in the, well, no longer our district, but Congressmember Rick Larson toured parts of Edmonds, and I just appreciate the Congressman's Office inviting Mount Lake Terrace staff and residents over to discuss some pedestrian bicycle infrastructure over there. And then fast forward to an event I was at was the Youth Science Event on July 8th that was held out here in the plaza. It was, it was fun to see recently liberated schoolchildren enjoying their summer break, learning about stormwater and comprehensive plans and such. So that was another, I think, well-organized event by staff and enjoyed seeing some friendly faces there. Attended the Councilwork Session last week and attended the Movie in the Park as well. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so let's see. Association Washington City's Annual Conference from June 20th to 23rd, attended several sessions. It was a great, a great conference overall, but attended some sessions on digital, the digital divide and equity partnering with providers to provide service. A topic we've been all very interested in is expanding our access to broadband and internet services, so I've got some good ideas from that. Building bridges, deescalating disagreements and understanding why different people have different opinions and really trying to understand how to work together rather than fight amongst each other. And so I thought there were some great sessions on, on building bridges. Also attended some sessions on innovative and sustainable infrastructure approaches and talked about, again, some opportunities with broadband and the Public Works Trust Fund and Board, has some pilot programs. Also attended a session on the Main Street changing retail landscape based on, you know, following up on COVID and how that has changed life in general, but particularly the economy and retail sector, and how we can better support some of our small businesses in developing approaches to address, you know, providing e-commerce support and helping them break down that digital divide and create not only a physical location, but also a digital and online location for abilities to approach business. Anyway, some great sessions provided some of that. I know the city manager attended as well as the mayor, and we all brought back some great materials to be able to look through and kind of get some better ideas on what others are doing around the state and country to address a lot of the challenges we face today. Anyway, while we were there, I also had a session with Snoomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee Meeting on the 21st, where we approved the ICC recommendations for Snoomish County Rural Towns Corridors Program. We reviewed the 2024 dues assessment, which by the way, for Mount Lake Terrace will be $5,430. We talked about, we had an update on the housing snapshot from AHA, which by the way, we ought to be, we've talked about this, but reach out to Chris Collier and AHA and bring them in. Probably be good to have a presentation, a new updated presentation from them. But basically, in a snapshot, based on today's housing costs, the median required income to purchase a home is $164,000, but the median, actual, actual median income is $110,000. So there you see the challenge that we face in trying to get people into housing and provide housing. And, you know, both, again, he'll provide a lot more detail on, you know, homeownership and opportunities and affordability and the challenges there, as well as rental and how those costs for rental is getting more and more difficult for people to obtain rental housing. Anyway, on the 22nd, had Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board Meeting, where we approved the Downtown Kirkland Regional Growth Center. We approved a regional public participation plan for how we're reaching out to the public and engaging the public and getting their input on regional plans. And then we also added update on federal policy and funding for infrastructure and other programs, so we again passed that on to city manager to be able to take a look at some funding opportunities, federal funding opportunities. Then we've already talked about the, on the 28th, the Ballinger Park Playground Ribbon Cutting. On the 29th, had the Mount Lake Terrace Sound Transit, Sound Transit Station Site Tour. The 29th, we also had a work-study session, the 3rd of July Celebration. Again, kudos to all the staff and everybody that put that together, is well organized, a great program overall, and looking forward to continuing that tradition. But great job, and it was a fun, great community activity and program and fun to see everybody out there. On the 6th, had the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Policy Board Meeting, and quickly reminded us that we have our OFM population estimates are now out, and Mount Lake Terrace is just under 24,000 citizens. We also certified the King County Planning Policy, King County Planning Policies, their countywide planning policies. We also talked about middle housing grants and the House Bill 21, 1,110, comp plan updates, Mount Lake Terrace, again, more funding opportunities for Mount Lake Terrace with $100,000 for us to be able to tap into and utilize to help us with our comp plan process and a lot of other funding for our Housing Action Plan. And anyway, there's funding available from the state to be able to help us address these challenges we face with growth and accommodating growth and planning, et cetera. Where else? What else? Housing, yes. We also had to talk about the racial equity and analysis and housing exclusion and segregation, how that has affected the, you know, different divides and equal access to housing and had some interesting tools that, again, PSRC has available to help us figure out how to, first of all, just know where we are and what, where we stand and then help us figure out how to break down those barriers. Let's see. We also talked about, oh, the BIPOC. I think we all know that the BIPOC community is most at risk for displacement and shows, there's again, some more tools on showing severe shortage of middle housing for, and how that affects the ability to get people into housing, particularly across equitable approach. Anyway, just a lot of tools available, again, from PSRC to be able to tap into and utilize in the planning process. Lot of technical stuff here, so I won't. I'll just say that, again, opportunities to be able to tap into resources that are available. And we also, oh, there's a Housing Pro forma tool, resource available to help analyze market potential of middle housing and how policy decisions impact housing costs, reduce parking, allow more density, streamline permitting, and restructure, restructure impact fees are some ideas on how we can help address some of those challenges. So anyway, a great meeting. Lot of information, be happy to share with anybody who has more, wants more information and asks questions. City Manager Meeting with the Mayor and I on, and the City Manager on July 6th, Emergency Operations Tour on the 12th, Councilwork Session on the 13th, Movie in the Park on the 13th. Again, kudos to Andrew and staff for putting together a great event. Really excited that we were able to kick that off and looking forward to having more of those into the future. And then, as Councilmember Sonmore indicated, we had our Finance Committee Meeting earlier today, and that concludes my report.
All right. Okay, thank you. So for my report, it goes all the way back to June 21st at AWC in Spokane. I went to a lot of housing sessions. But one that I was invited to was a Housing Roundtable by invitation only with Representative Jake Fay. Fay? Okay. And he was sitting there listening to everybody talking about what their cities needed, and lots and lots of good information going on there. On the 24th, I attended the Edmonds Woodway Amateur Radio Club. They do a field day every year in, at Lake Ballinger. And three years ago, apparently, when I showed up, they apparently have invited elected official to this for years, and no one showed up until I showed up that year and Councilmember Woodard showed up. And I've been going every year, because what happens with them is that if our emergency 911 system goes down for any reason, we have to rely on these amateur ham operators, and they're gonna be saving us at that time, so. And then, on the 26th, I attended the Snoomish County Mayor's Meeting, and that's for all Snoomish County mayors. And on the 28th, I attended the ADA Playground Ribbon Cutting, and I'm so proud that we have a great, great playground like that. There are others, but ours is located right next to a lake on an ADA pathway, so. And then, on the 29th, I also attended the Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center Light Rail Tour with Sound Transit. And wow, that's gonna be some station when we open it, and I can't wait. And on the 3rd of July, I attended the Mount Lake Terrace Plaza. They had a barbecue for the 3rd of July. And that evening, I attended the fireworks, and I'm just amazed at how many people attended that fireworks, because when, when I tried to get from A to B, and I needed to go from here to here, the people coming this way was a, just shoulder to shoulder. There was no way that you could go through that crowd, so we had to go across the street and go around, right? So, and let's see. And then on the 5th of July, I attended the South County Mayor's, and that's only the half of the mayors in the South County. And it's very, very nice to have the two perspectives of these mayor's meetings, because the South County mayors know each other so well, and we talk about sharing our challenges in our cities. The Snoomish County mayors for the whole, whole Snoomish County is mostly the North County mayors talking about their problems. So, but it, but it also affects all of us, and we get a lot of good ideas from everybody. Let's see. On the 6th of July, I attended the Community Transit Board Meeting. And then on the 7th, I attended the Seashores Transportation Forum. And I'm looking at their agenda, and two items on their agenda was about complete streets. The presenter Zachary Howard, Principal Multimodal Planner for King County, and King County and Snoomish Washdaw. And then the other was about the Aurora Avenue Project. And it's just fascinating to hear all of these things in the very, very beginning of their planning stages and so forth. So they're, they're doing a lot to prepare us for light rail and transportation in general. And on the 8th of July, attended the Youth Science Stormwater right outside here in the plaza. And apparently, they did this before at the Lake Ballinger. And, and they're working on Lake Ballinger right now, so they did it on our plaza, and I think that that was really a great use of our plaza. And then on the 12th, I attended the, Snoomish County Executive has a mayor's meeting, and so we have three mayors meeting a month. And that one, that one, we get the ear of our executive as we talk about our cities. Later that day, I toured the Mount Lake Terrace Public Works Department building, and I got to see the ELC, which is the Emergency Operations Center, and the 911 Backup Center. And I hadn't been there for about almost 10 years. So we should at least look at our public buildings more than once every 10 years. At least I go to, go to the pavilion more often than that. And on the 13th, I also went to the beginning part of the Movies in the Park, and I didn't know what to expect, because we didn't really do a lot of advertising and so forth. And so, and when I arrived there, there were one rural people. When I left, there were a lot of people, and I think even more people were coming as I was leaving. So I am just really proud that we had the crowd that we did, and kudos to the staff that put that together. And hopefully, this, the word will get out, because these people will be telling their friends when the next movie is. And that is the Sandlot on the, on August 13th? 24th. At, it's earlier than 9:15. It'll be a little bit earlier, maybe 8:30? Okay. All right. And if anybody in the city wants a copy of the poster, an actual poster for the Sandlot, I just found one in my house. And that is the end of my report. Go ahead, Councilmember Sonmore.
I wrote down August 15th for the art submittal, because I need to give myself a grace period, but you actually have till the 18th, so I just wanted to correct myself.
All right. Anyone else? So next, then we can move on to our last thing on our agenda, which is new business. And on the new business, I just had a question, one question, quick question about the, our city booth at Tour de Terrace on Saturday and Sunday. What are the hours, so that if you were going to be volunteering to man the booth, what are the hours that you need us at?
Yeah, the hours for the booth itself are 12 to 5, and members of the leadership team will be there. I think the first shift is 12 to 2:30, and the second shift is 2:30 to 5. So there'll always be a member of city staff there, and if you want to come by and help out and talk with folks about the conference of plan or anything else, anytime between those hours would be great.
So it's 12 to 5 both Saturday and Sunday, and so we can drop by. Like, I plan to stay, stay for a couple of hours, but I can't tell you exactly when I'm gonna be there at this moment. Okay? And then, anyone else with new business? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have five, so I don't apologize, just giving you foreshadows so you can hold on. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge Public Works. I came in 56th today, and those potholes are gone. It still looks ugly, but at least you won't hurt your car. So we had a comment earlier about, will those potholes be fixed? Yes, they will. Government can sometimes hear and move at the same time. That said, I also want to point out, if you haven't noticed, the fair has actually arrived. I pulled off the freeway on that same drive home, looked to my left, and there was, it could have been a triggering moment, the zipper or something, one of those really funky rides, which I love. So I was like, yeah, oh my God, I'm so excited. That said, I think a lot of people respond that way, and then they look into their pocket and moths fly out, like in the cartoons, which is just my way of saying, I hope our commissions would give some consideration, because you have your own money, to this idea of equity and affordability, and see if there's something that you can figure out between now and the end of the week to perhaps price break the wristbands or something like that. I know that the fair has been trying to be fair. They have to business, and they have to travel, and they have staff and all that, but costs are rising and pocketbooks are down. So there might be something there, just to put out there. I heard the DEI was meeting this week, and so I was going to stop in, just so they have a heads up that that is going to be a request, to consider if they haven't already thought about that. Don't worry, I will not do a running commentary on all five. That's number one. Number two is, speaking of holes, cornhole. I just want to acknowledge Andrew. What a wonderful put-together, I don't even know how to put it. It was a whole smattering of opportunities, but it began with partnerships. He reached out to a church, or a church reached out to him, and they set up the cornhole. I bring that up in this space just to say that we have a wonderful opportunity. I know for those of us who went to see the American Legion, they talked about having their cornhole and wanting to do something. Danielle putting on the cornhole for the city, and those wonderful boards that we have has talked about it. And I have this church. So Andrew, I believe, is reaching out to coordinate all three of those, and that's my way of saying, it'd be great to have a city council cornhole team, just keep that in mind. be great to have a city council cornhole team. Just keep that in mind. It's a very easy game, but keep that in mind. That said, I can't read my own handwriting without my glasses on, so I'm going to move past that, and just say, we had, number three, an email from a family, and I could not find it. I read it literally here, that talked about, they're oxygenarians, and really just echoed the point that Councilmember Sonmore made, which is that maybe it's time for us to start thinking about something other than fireworks. Case in point, I think that was absolutely unnecessary to be setting off fireworks at 4:00 in the morning. Is your life that boring? I'm going to keep saying that. That just seemed very inconsiderate on so many levels. But again, it kind of harkens back to, what is the point of fireworks? What is the point of the holiday? What is something we can do that meets everybody's needs? Because it is not as fun as you think it is. And I love fireworks. Everybody knows that about me. If you don't, that means you don't know me. Moving forward to number four, just want to acknowledge John Fox sent an email to, I don't know how many of us, with a new concern. I just wanted to make sure the city saw that, and I'm trusting you all are responding to that, so I don't have to. But just want to acknowledge both families taking time to write to the city. We do read those, and we do care about those. And then last but not least, I'm going to use the mayor's comment, and this is my last one, about the ham radio folks. You know, I thought it was funny, too. I wanted to giggle. But let me just be clear as possible. There is nothing more scary than the lack of information. And as I sat in that back room, which I did sit down, I, I had great confidence, but not hearing anything, not knowing anything, that was a horrible feeling. But at the same time, I just want to pause and make sure that I said I wasn't stressed at all. I have so much confidence in this council, that I just wanted to pause and just say, even though I recused myself from that vote, I wholeheartedly agree with it. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for standing behind behavioral health and us actually putting some dollars behind some actual potential remedy, or at least attempt at addressing clearly an epidemic across this nation, if not across this globe. Our little part today made a world of difference. And that just said, tying it back into this idea of lack of information, so much confidence, and I'm just honored to know that it came out as a 6-0. I look forward to reading or looking at the recording later. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? New business? All right. I guess that's it then. Next is adjournment. We're adjourned.